I think we still need to speed up in the meeting for maybe for Tuesday meeting. And then it's all. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Superior Court.
I'm here asking for the grant renewal for the Vansky grant, the Adult Guardian Services grant, sponsored by the Kansas Supreme Court, who won the past.
I'll say those. Appreciate it.
I'm good.
It may be possible to get a picture. It should never been from the four official preparations because the letter that we got from the Supreme Court was normally seventy-five thousand, but it looks like they made seventy-six.
I saw something written something about that.
Yeah, it was in the letter. We haven't received it yet. The letter said that they're anticipating seventy-six.
Okay, great. All right, any questions? Thank you. Vision room one.
Room one is a matter of, there's a contract. This is done actually over here. It's a transfer. It's a contract, so they take the money out of payroll. And they take, you know, they take it out of payroll and just plug it into the contract.
You want to get any questions?
Is that something that we should just set up the budget that way? Because when it's a two, we have to keep it in one or the other.
They just don't want to lose the positions. So I don't know the story. The whole story happened.
If this is the one, I thought we deleted the position for that reason.
There's not going to be any money in the position. Because we're taking it out and putting it into the contract. I'll talk to Scott and let's see if we maybe we can remedy that in budget and just remove that one.
Just it just needs a reduction for next year.
Yeah. If we can reduce professionals by that amount and increase other professional services by the same amount in the budget.
Jim and a court. Morning.
Um, starting off with a new grant, moving on mental health program. And we're going to be creating two position coordinator.
And it's all coming out of the grant fund, right?
Yes. And then number nine is a reduction. It's the family recovery. They asked the state for more money. So we have. And he's kind of fun. Ended up, we had a IT for some very long. Get tired. So we have all the people placed there and we're talking that. Her buddies lowering it and proposing to her three people. Ron is the chief operating officer. Does a lot of stuff. He, Ryan's his assistant to the IT. And then Kim is an assistant to our HR person. Those are the people that we want to bump up a little bit. Do some of the things. But for Greg, which he. Everybody else, which I think is great.
We're eliminating the position as a priority.
No, we're not eliminating it. We're just lowering it to forty-six five sixty-two. And then we're going to pick four thousand that's left over and disperse it. And then B is the regional detention facility. To they want to supplemental pay six thousand. Line item appropriation.
These, Tim, I'm going to move back to nine E. Did these folks get a raise in the last budget?
For the family recovery. That's where.
No, and nine E.
Oh, nine E, I'm sorry. Yes, the three people? Yes. These are key people. And Judge. They all go. Everybody goes to probably not into it. But I mean, they've done a lot more of this. It's out of despair.
I understand that. I would ask my colleagues what their thoughts are on giving an additional raise. That's all. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it that much. On nine E.
I understand your concern. We just gave away since January, you're giving raises again. And it's like, well, if you felt these folks deserve the salary, then why didn't you ask for that in your budget? First place. It is coming from within their budget. So.
I guess we have to send it all under ten A.
And if I can, some of these people taken on, for instance, the IT had three people. So this is going to be two.
But Jim, I'll tip you up now. I don't want to hear really, I'm politely, I'm saying, I don't want to hear where you're in here. All the technology officers used to make fifty-five grand now they're making fifty-six. So we need to do something about that, because your department's requesting it.
Well, that position should have been, we haven't decided who's going to be in that position for the reduction.
What is it? I mean, if you don't fill it right away, obviously, you could technically have the same prorated salary. And then in the next budget, they could ask for it to bump back up. But I see what you're saying, Dave, that is this a permanent reduction? Is this a temporary reduction? Are we?
Right.
Are we changing kind of the fundamentals of that position?
I like what you guys do, you and Judge and everybody, but. It's in January, we're giving another raise. It's definitely what we already have.
This reduction down to forty-six five sixty-two is about ten dollars a week. And before I got some of the teachers were in detention spots. No one can take a teacher out of the detention spot and put a person in here. Forty-six five two, which gives us another detention.
Okay, I'm going to run one. And I'll support it. Those are my questions.
Um, the next one, B is a destination potential facility. Like I said, they're getting supplemental paid. They're going to set up, pick out some thoughts of what they may have to use for, and they may not. So we need to bring line items in. Pass up. Pass up on seven, you know, six. Appropriation helps you for not so far. C. Can't see doing that. Reduction for as a building. Any question? And then, well, this is the child support. It's all bank money. This isn't for the. Creating a bailiff spot so that they can hit the bailiff that Gary. That's what they're.
I don't know if it's going to be necessary, but I'd like somebody to hear.
Yeah.
I'll get on that question.
Is there anybody particularly?
I'm not personal for you. On those increases that we talked about earlier.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Fairgrounds.
I spoke with superintendent John Marshall. This is just a appropriation of a non-reverting fund to pay for people to mow grass, pick up branches, plow snow, general maintenance.
Can't wait till we mow grass. Busy management. Good morning.
Good morning. Both fourteen and fifteen were due to an error on my part during the budgeting process. I did not budget for. The two funds, both grant funds, but I just, I missed it. So we needed an appropriation for other equipment. The Homeland Security Grant Fund eighty-two forty-nine and new line item for services and charges and an appropriation for eleven eighty-five.
Funds in there, you just need to.
Yeah, plenty of other ones.
The other equipment that. If we do a state homeland security program grant application every year. It's a reimbursement grant. So these are, this is seed money, our reimbursement grant, in the event that we support it, the SHS.
Any questions?
Thanks, guys. Stay healthy.
Health Department.
Good morning.
Jasmine Brown is on the.
Morning, Jasmine Brown. So he has, most of you probably are aware that our administrator, Mr. Nick Duff, has retired as of yesterday. So we are in the process of interviewing and filling the parts, filling the position with the well-qualified eligible members. And we started the interview process and here we are here to request an increase in the salary to about hundred and ten thousand from the current salary. So about in twenty-twelve, I don't want to get too much, the Indiana Richard Fairbank School of Public Health has done an extensive survey of all the health departments across the state and has basically published the data as to salaries of the different positions across the state. And it basically showed that the Lake County Health Department's salaries in some positions were not close to the average compared to the rest of the state. So here we are requesting an increase in the salary, just so that we will be able to get the right candidates to do the job. In fact, in twenty-twenty-two, when they had done the survey and found that the salary was not anywhere close to the average with the rest of the state. It was prior to what the health administrator needed to do. This was even before they had managed the health for Indiana budget, which is now close to probably additional nine million. So we do need people who are going to be dedicated to not only run the health department's original budget, but we also need for them to supervise this large amount of HFA funding that comes along with their responsibility. So that's the reason we're requesting a market adjustment to the salary. So we can get, as I said, by form validation.
Yes. What is the average salary? Talk about, but what does that number look like?
Well, it did. Average salary, for example, we can compare to the counties which are close to Lake County. Allen County, which is probably, which is a little bit smaller than Lake County, administrator gets paid hundred and twenty.
Any questions?
A question out of County Health Fund. What's the revenue stream that puts that health? Set the health Indiana funds. Where does that revenue come from? This is that eleven five. Is that primarily? Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Eleven oh five property.
It's a levy fund?
Yeah.
Are there funds within that available for that? Or is that going to be something you have to supplement somewhere else?
Well, we, I've spoke to her about this and we're, she's not going to ask for an appropriation because we feel that there's probably going to be vacancies, time off, unused. And that's where the difference will be. That's what we're, that's what we're hoping. Anything might be a small appropriation, but that's, that's above. Maybe she needs to hire someone.
I just, I want to kind of know what the, what the levy of that is and if there's excess funds in it to cover that, give that scenario that your painting doesn't happen where there's not vacancies and not time off. And we have to make that appropriation be good to kind of have that.
Yeah, I haven't looked at our budget, but maybe there is a part time or some other line item that we could.
There are user, sources in that fund. Restaurant, restaurant inspections. Full inspections, certificates for. Is there substantial revenue that comes in with that type of activity?
That's a relative. Turn around. It's, it's, it's a, it's right now. I guess right now, but more than.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the details. Thanks.
Madam President.
Questions? Yes, Brown.
Is there a job description for this administrator's position?
Yes, it is a job description for that.
Okay, could, could we get that, the job description? And is there a range or is it just a one set salary?
It is a month set salary at this point in time. Yes.
No, I'm saying, is there a range? You want to interview people and is there a range for? Is it just set at that one hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Well, that's what you're requesting. You know, that is requesting a salary of one hundred and ten.
Okay. If, if I could get a copy of the job description.
In the job description, which we have advertised a couple of weeks ago, when we knew that Nick Donovan was going to leave, I did not put a salary in that because we did not know what the salary would be. So once we have people coming in, once we start offering the job, that is when we're telling them what the salary would be. And I'm hoping that we would be able to get a salary of hundred and two thousand so that they can be offered to the candidate.
I don't mind putting in a sliding scale, saying from X to X, no different to, we hire professionals based on their, what they're bringing to the table, that person. And then you can make the adjustment to look the right salary. But one thing that I think we really do have to keep into consideration is your total cut, total compensation, total package. When the court sued the council, saying that they were making enough money, that they were paying, it was underpaid. When you looked at our defined benefits, meaning our vacation, our paid sick days, our contributions to pension, all those things have a dollar figure. And I would hope that they take it into consideration when we advertise that, hey, it's, it's, you know, twenty-five thousand a year just in healthcare. You don't, you're not paying, you know, four hundred a month out of pocket like you are with other employers. So there's some benefits still.
Yes, there is.
And I do understand the need, you know, but not everybody might not be entitled to a hundred. Maybe you might have that other person who needs a hundred and fifteen. So maybe you put a slide in there and as you're doing the process, we're looking at from Nick's salary of two then hundred and ten, hundred and fifteen thousand. And then you're born the ability to, based on the skill and ability level of that potential employee is what the salary would be. That's would be my only.
As of right now, just so that you know, this salary has been brought to a vote of health and they have approved, they have unanimously approved his particular salary. So we are coming after.
Let me, Doctor, one question. Is this, I mean, Nick's got like fifty years or more.
Yes.
Is this, is this suggesting that Nick was underpaid all this year?
Say nothing about all.
Everybody, it's not everybody's fine, Doctor. I mean, it's like, okay, Nick, see you later. But by the way, the new guy, you're getting fifteen grand more.
The answer is, I believe, he probably was. Whether it was all those years or overtime with inflation, it's going to be difficult for me to say. Right? I mean, like, you know, but when we are telling Nick that someone at Allen County doing the same job as him is being paid somewhere between hundred and ten to hundred and twenty thousand, and expect him to do the same thing, if not more, especially adding on all the HFA funding. Yes, the answer to your question, I mean, is yes.
And madam.
Any other questions?
Yes. I guess the problem I do struggle with, it's not like we have advertised and we haven't got any candidates. And we're just losing the side because we're saying there's a need. We don't know if a candidate will come in a seven salary unless he had this candidate work and maybe come back and do it. Just go right out the back. We don't know right now. We're just saying, hey, Nick has been underpaid and now we want to bring it up to the market. I think we should put it out there first to the market and let's see if the market comes back and tells us. And if there's a need, then come back to us and request a decision.
I agree with that. You interview your people and I think we spoke about this. And then if they say, you know, the salary's ninety-four right now, and then they say, well, I'm not going to work for ninety-four, then you, you ask, well, what, what is their request? And, you know, and then then we start from there. If it's the candidate you want, and then we've done that in several departments. You know, I can't hire an engineer for thirty-four. They're not going to take less than forty-five. And we made the adjustment.
If I can answer that question, I did interview a candidate who I believe is very well qualified and who currently gets paid. If not, is a little again. So there is no way I would be in contact with person for not being paid for me.
Oh, we understand that. We, we understand that. We're saying that what, what we want to vote on the salary of this administrator is what the person you want to hire will accept. So they don't have to come back and then, you know, I mean, maybe they'll set the hundred. I'm not saying they will, but then we give it too much. This, oh, that salary is one hundred and ten. Just saying, like, yeah.
But that's where you could actually make this a range instead of what Ted was suggesting. And, and when, Doctor, I think, you know, that person may be very close to that salary. I like to give you the range and then based on what you feel and you utilize that. Because just because we get a hundred and ten approved doesn't mean that we have to spend a hundred and ten. But what I would like to, I mean, I personally would like to see is, is that, is that range put in there? Would be good. And I think to find benefit, people need healthcare. We have healthcare here. We have maybe in that other position they have, maybe their benefits aren't as good. Maybe they don't get to be sort of the quantity of vacation and paid sick days. And I don't think there's a holiday we don't have on. So I think that's a really big selling point for folks, especially a person that's giving a raise a family they need. Or the dynamic work is a team, right? And I think that adds up. I mean, we get good, we get good attorneys just based on, you know.
Any further questions?
Um, the only thing. I have to keep doing this. Is there any money in your part time or anything that could be moved over to out of?
Honestly, I think the money where it is going to be moved and all is truly not my expertise. It was Nick's expertise and he was the one who tried to put this together. And according to him, as far as the personal money is concerned, we have all the positions hired. I agree with the fact that some people may take vacation or not. However, we do have money in some of the line items according to Nick, which can be moved if necessary before the end of the year. So budget will be.
So you see firsthand the hazard pay that Nick should have gotten coming in here.
We can sit with Scott and look at your budget. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Economic development. Green guidelines. It's our fund. And placing, putting it there. Yeah, I said.
I see the letter. I, I know everybody's got it.
Yeah, he was appointed in. He sent it after the fact.
Did he?
Hammett and Gary Courthouses, Missioners, anyone? Oh, it's like utilities again.
These are carryovers from last month.
Oh, okay.
They do have a fresh budget. Look, it was because they're running out of money. Last year now there's twenty-five.
I'll be watching your budget yet, Scott. I understand.
Yeah, is it really needed right now? Or did they go in the? Okay, so we might have no action. Again, that was another deferred, same thing. They have a resolution for the Superduty Truck.
It's resolution, just everybody understands, it's just correcting a bin number and things like that in prior.
Oh, okay. Is that what it's doing? Okay, the bin number or? Oh, okay. Alfredo, come on up. We want to talk about the resolution regarding the mayor report.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm Matt Sullivan, attorney operator for Stanton Barber, reducing the health work for the county. And ran into a bit of an issue. Some may know that the Lake County ordinance governing the correction, appeals of the Lake County Sheriff's Correction Mayor Board disciplinary matters in substantive parts mirrors and mimics the statutes that governs the Lake County Sheriff Mayor Board police officers, Indiana statute, except in one instance, and the timeframe to gather the documents regarding the appeal process. The Indiana statutes for the police officers allows for thirty days. And that's generally the timeframe for all appeals, even in the court systems from a trial court to the Indiana court or some other timeframes, it's thirty days to file your appeal. In the Lake County ordinance, for some reason, on the Sheriff Mayor Board correction side, it's ten days. In ten days. Seems a bit unduly upon sheriff staff and the assigned attorney. You're lucky to get an assigned attorney within two or three days, right, in response. It's unduly for to get ten days and the record, which could be thousands of pages and transcripts and hundreds of documents for a two or three day trial together and filed with the court. And it causes a lot of legal issues regarding whether county comply with it. So what I asked your attorney, Attorney Adorno and Attorney Copac, who represents Sheriff Martinez in his day-to-day visals, questioned us over this with me and, and really come to a solution. The ordinance came, just for your knowledge, in the eighties with a, some, you know, I think that was maybe two or three years old, just so for some of these ways. And some federal litigation.
Well, you can leave now.
So it came through some DOJ, you know, settlement agreement. So there's some, there's some things we need to look out for that. But it's really just a procedural thing to give us some time to really make sure we have some, some really good record to provide to the courts and we can provide not only the correctional officer with its due process rights, which we want to ensure, right? And with the county, it's the time to appeal and make sure the record's right. We don't, we do not want to range on the correctional officer's ability to appeal. That's not the thought here. We want to make sure they have that back. And that's going to be the case. But we do want to, you know, give us the time to properly. That's the only change. Ten to thirty, that's all we want, you know, and.
I saw it, something about a bond.
Yeah, so the bond issue, let's.
When it comes to the dates and the timeframe, did you put it in your spell out working days or is it just a days?
It's just days. So weekends count. And right now, weekends count. So if it's.
I mean, that's odd.
It's so, yeah, four days, four days. It's so, yeah, four days, four days is weekend. Some work in weekends, but they'll look for those weekends.
Yeah, I mean, I do think it's necessary to amend this to put in there, you know, to set the dates instead of just just making that we have the holidays. What are they doing? I think it could be shut down here.
It's thirty calendar days, but if it falls on its holiday or a a weekend, it goes extends to the next working day. So if it falls on a Sunday, it's filed on a Monday. They land up for July, your filing dates, the fifth of July.
Right, John, that's that's a first calendar day, correct? You know, the question of time is all I was getting, putting that one word on there, working days would have had quite a bit.
You know, I just, that's the thing. It's the bond issue came up in that, um, how do I say this? I'm a bit more present representing the county and been successful in getting higher bonds to make sure things are prosecuted by appellants. And that I I seek higher bonds to prosecute these things, you know, I don't like lower bonds because if like if we allow these appellants in certain situations, have a hundred dollar bond, they wouldn't sit. Right? And the county's paying me, paying for the transcripts, paying for all these things while they have a hundred dollars in the game. Right? What's their, what's their, they have no skin in the game. So I I I was successful in getting a a felon pay a five thousand dollar bond. One judge awarded it. The other one said, that's crazy. Um, so if if the county councils willing to set within the ordinance, um, amount, they think it's fair for the sheriffs, uh, the correctional officers to pay. I think that's within the discretion. The case law, um, right now is up in the air. Um, I'll let you know in a plant commission case, trans, oh, no, in the sheriff mayor board case. In the plant commission case, highly controversial plant commission case dealing motocross bikes. The transcripts range, uh, touched thirty five hundred dollars. Right? Uh, in the in the sheriff mayor board case, the court reporting and transcripts combined touched eleven thousand. And the court set a five hundred dollar bond. So you get my point, right? And so, you know, and and they're entitled to have a deeply defense, right? And so that's that's just my thought in litigating these cases the way I do. The 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 sheriff correction officer has five hundred dollars in the game. And we have, as the county, um, with my expenses, probably with my fees, near fifteen thousand dollars right now at the county level in fees to make sure that the county's, um, litigating this case properly. So that was my my thought in in prosecuting and how I go about this. And I'm always in contact with attorney touch when doing, when I, when I have these type of thoughts of litigating. But that's why we're here today to kind of discuss the ordinance change and stuff to you guys. It's just my thoughts. And that's why I spoke with attorney O'Donnell on it and he's, uh, we've been in some communication.
Okay, I'm just reading like prior you was, uh, there's half ten days after the service is summoned and the new it's ten days after thirty days or within thirty days. The language is is, um, I don't fully understand. You're saying changing it from the summons to the bond?
Yes, yes. And and that it is to point out that the statute, the ordinance really does mirror the actual statute of sheriffs. And in that, it requires the person to have a bond, uh, in that statute. So the bond, that makes, why do we need to have the expense of gathering everything if they're not putting the skin in?
I get that.
So the thing triggering is not the filing of the appeal. It's them paying.
Are the correction officers aware of this a little bit?
Okay, can we just have her say that's a very.
It is. So my question was, this is got to be one of the grievance procedures, got to be in the CBA. And I don't know why we're trying to, you know, the thing we should be focused on is maybe we don't screw up and we have to litigate between our employees.
So the concern I had is is this going to be violative of there is a, there's a portion of the bargaining agreement that says, uh, if if the rules and regulations bargaining unit accepts the rules and regulations as they were firmly imposed at the time of if those rules and regulations are going to change and the bargaining union gets to have their say, have their opinion be heard and and rejected.
It's an impact in terms of conditions of employment. And so you, and it's white covered in the CDAs you got.
Right. So I've spoken Alfredo about this. I've spoken Jack Pollock about this. They're they're reading, um, of the rules and regulations that is talked about are the actual six hundred page policy manual of the corrections officers. Not this ordinance, which is county council established. So the perception is that that this does not impact the collective bargaining agreement because it is not a rule or regulation. It's a county ordinance that governs the process for the appeal. So that that's the full disclosure of the backstory that's been going on since we've talked about it three months.
I agree, yeah.
You would.
Figuring arbitration.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year to you all.
All right, back to the agenda. Oh.
Want to violate, right?
What's that? The violate three cents. Seventy cents went up. I thought, yes, places were going to go down.
Seventy cents. There's a county meeting. Well, we'll see in the headline, Dan. Dan's going to go with this.
Yeah, the outstanding. Yeah, our standing bill is from AIC. A state meeting or something. Okay, me. And then we have several appointments. Uh, Park and Recreation, I believe that is Christopher Dills who sent in a letter. Is it yours or does it go to the show?
Yes.
Yeah, she sent in a letter saying you'd like to sit up and retain that position appointment. Uh, domestic violence, I've spoken to, uh, these will all be, I mean, everyone who sits now currently would like to remain on, except for the law enforcement member. Was Larry Thurman retired and now there is a new focus spot on sheriff's office who they'd like to have sit. So I have those ones. Council medicals. Oh, currently Randy Neimeyer, okay. Mr. We should stay on there, committee member.
It's fun.
The, uh, county manager.
Yes. It's fun.
It's fun.
Sometimes.
Data processing, currently have, uh, two council members, which I believe are.
Myself.
Yourself.
I don't know who else. I think Charlie.
I, yeah, I believe Charlie.
Yes.
And then, uh, Scott sits as the administrator. Okay, with Charlie, is Charlie still on?
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm here.
Do you still wish to, uh, retain your your seat on the data processing board?
Yes.
Um, insurance review board.
I'm currently on there.
You're on there?
I I don't mind getting renewed. You know, I I've worked with Larry and Scott on insurance issues throughout the years.
Very good. Lake County Abuse Prevention Council. They even meet. I've asked Tori to look into seeing when all of these committees meet. Um,
I I was on that and it never mattered.
Yeah, I don't think they do.
That was a long time ago, though.
Why are we pointing towards to. So we need to look into that a little more. Uh, NRBC, Randy, I believe you sit on there?
Yes, that's also fun.
Okay. Private Industry Council, I don't know, do they meet? Who sits, who sits there? Charlie?
No. I'll obviously there no meetings there.
But you've never invited to a meeting?
No.
Elected officials committee, get to look into seeing headlines. And Solid Waste Board is myself and Conso. The Malder, you still wish to sit on that?
Was that me again?
You're coming to Thursday's meeting on the sixteenth? What'd you say, Charlie?
Was that me again on Solid Waste?
No, that's, uh, that's Pete.
Yeah.
They're they're fun meetings, too. Evening meeting, six thirty at night.
Set there for years.
You don't like talking about trash?
I do like talking about trash. Not even trash, though.
Well, no, it's not trash. It's, uh, Economic Development Commission. Now that's where, I don't know if it's the title, because I did reach out, uh, I don't know if you want to reach out to the person that's on, that's in the hamming.
Is it Dan?
I I I saw, I, uh, spoke to Rick Long, who represents Lake Station. He says he's on the, he called something else. A redevelopment project. So are there two different ones? And I asked him to look to see if they meet because it's only if they have an economic development commission. If the city of your town doesn't, there's no need for the importance. Yeah.
The city or town will have a seat if they've established an EDA, an economic development area.
Yeah.
That is being invested, using TIF funds to invest in other than residential. Hammond, I'd like to reappoint Dan.
It says John Mesmer.
Yes, John.
John Mesmer is the. Oh, that's, oh, that's the other one. That's probably the, what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's confusing.
Who who's the St. John? I think we just did that. Yeah. Was that? I can't remember who that was.
It's on here.
I think it was. Or parents, got it. But you want to reach out to Billy? See if it's still as good as the lemon.
And then we have the data board appointments, which, um, they've been sending the department heads have been sending in there, one piece to them. We have two as well. Scott, you sit on there, right? And.
Charlie.
Charlie? Oh, did we do that? Okay, so that's why we're now. Okay, and then some like a short agenda.
Yeah, famous last words.
Oh, it's the longest one.
Ms. Brandy was reading out my paper.
Right. You put it out in the email. I'm saying, I think.
I wonder if that was the county president's here. They've never seen.
Tom's going to print out the, um, statute, uh, the funds that the court wants to use.